Welcome, everyone. It's 5 o'clock on Monday, January the 3rd, and we'll call this regular city council meeting to order. If everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Deb.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Don.
Yeah, here.
Jody.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Thank you, everyone. Entertainer motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Tyler. Is there any discussion? Hearing that vote, please Deb.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody. Yes.
I said yes, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion carried. We have an agenda tonight. So I want to thank Kylie Scow. She's our videographer tonight. And then also would just like to wish everyone the best for 2022. And I do want to take this opportunity to thank the city staff, employees, and certainly city council for all the progress that we made in 2021 and looking forward to a robust year this year with more city improvements. So thank you very much. City council have anything they would like to share tonight or?
Just wish everybody a happy new year and thank city staff for all the work they do. Things went pretty well last year in spite of conditions and looking forward to another good year.
Okay, we'll move into update from the city administrator.
Just a few quick items. If you haven't got your December bill from, it's mailed out by AMU yet. People will be coming and flyer up here is an insert that will be in that bill explaining the new sanitary infrastructure fee that the city adopted in November. December was the first bill that's applied to. For most residents, most customers will be a $4 a month fee. The fee is based on size of the water meter, which correlates with the amount of water used in the sanitary sewer. So this would be step one, which will end up having to be a series of increases for upcoming wastewater plant private updrain, which is probably about a $15 million project that's planned to begin reconstruction in 2024 and completed by 2026. So just a lot of people know about this new fee and necessity for it in order to modernize our plants and stay compliant with the regulations by EPA and TNR. So Joanne Bodie, she put together this flyer for us and she's already putting her mark in a really good way on some of our communications. So. Other item, just wanted to share that the library will be hosting the I've Got a Area Chamber of Commerce coffee this Friday at 9:30. So if people haven't already been out to the library to see it yet, this is another great excuse to go do so. If you have already been out there, it might be worth going out again because it's simply open on December 6th. We've had a number of pieces of furniture come in, some of the really neat kind of sitting areas and reading desks for kids that look pretty neat. And then as well as some of the in panels and things, so you know what section they're in. So even though we're open, we continue to receive items that have been on long backorder. So just wanted to invite people to attend that, but it is Friday. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We do agenda item number seven. This is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the council chambers that would like to speak? Is there anyone on the phone? Barb, you see? Okay. We'll move into agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our last council meeting as well as work session on December the 20th, approving the bills to be paid this cycle and approve Jacob's administrator's report. Move to approve.
Second.
We have motion from Harley, a second from Brad. Is there any discussion? Vote, please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Move to agenda item number nine, the appointment of the city clerk.
In accordance with city code, the city clerk position is reappointed in January following very regularly scheduled municipal election. So there's more or less a formality, but I would recommend reappoint Deb Bell as city clerk.
And this is a two-year term?
Correct.
Two-year term, okay.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody. Is there any discussion? Hearing that vote, please Deb.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes, you do a good job.
Thank you. Motion carried. Look forward to working with you in the future. Move to agenda item number 10, and this pertains to new voting district wards. This is the second reading.
This ordinance will establish the new wards for city council. Districts following the 2020 census required to read districts. So this is the proposed wards. The legal description is shown there depicted on the map. This is the second reading of the ordinance.
Motion. Motion to waive the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the second reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing that vote, please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Yeah.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Motion carried to waive the second reading.
Motion to approve second reading.
Second.
We have motion from Rodney, a second from Harley to approve the second reading. Any discussion? Vote, please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody. Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 11 deals with public nuisance tax sale.
The property located at 8112 South Moore Street. Earlier this year, the city declared it a nuisance and requested that we allow the opportunity to acquire it through the public, which is a tax sale. The owner is deceased, as we understand. The heirs of the estate are interested in the property at all, so it's considered abandoned. This would initiate some of the newest procedures in order to acquire the property. Would the intent being that if we can acquire it, at that point, we would go in, give an inspection. Right now, we're kind of operating the assumption that it would need to be demolished, that it would be looked at if it is a property that can be rehabbed, though it would just pay a significant amount of effort. At that point, you know, we'd look at options to see that property redeveloped and brought into compliance and no longer a nuisance. But to do any of those options, we have to take some of these steps. Paul, anything to?
No, again, there's a notice of expiration of bribe redemption for tax sale, and we have to give it to anybody that has an interest in it. And because, you know, this person did pass away, most names ever been opened, we're gonna have to publish a notice in the paper, and so I'll be putting that together. And again, the Iowa code says that the council by resolution needs to designate a city official to sign that notice. And so that's why this resolution is put together, to designate the city court to sign their notice that's needed.
So how exactly would this work step by step? And is there, is there any way that we can incentivize the neighbors to buy the block versus us taking ownership? And then are we gonna have to be the ones that maintain the lawn and that type of thing after paying for demolition? Or is there any other ways of taking care of properties like this, like us going forward? What do you kind of want to discuss, just the process steps first?
Sure. What happens here is, again, after we publish the notice, there's a, I think, like a three-month waiting period or whatever. But there's a period of time, and there's certain affidavits have to be filed with the treasurer. And then the treasurer will actually give us a deed. And then once the city has a deed to the property, then we can, we can, as Jacob said, we can do what we want with it. So again, if we contact a neighbor and if there's any neighbors to the north or south that have an interest in it, certainly they'd be somebody that the city could, you know, work with to have them purchase it. More than likely, as Jacob said, just if yours looked at, I mean, you know, it probably will have to be demolished. But again, if somebody thinks they can fix it up and, you know, really, really get it going and want to handle it, I mean, they, they certainly, the city, some city would look at it.
Our preferred option is always that we can get the property owner to take care of the property itself. Obviously, in this case, that can happen. What we have done in the past with properties that we ended up acquiring, if we did have to do the demo, then we have done this to three properties and we ended up with sold all three on the condition that they be redeveloped to residential. And we didn't put a minimum price on them because our goal is to get it off of our books and our responsibility, and most importantly, to see the residential structure put back on there. So once we acquire the property, if we think it is, you know, potentially can be rehabbed, you know, there could be a process that we've allowed the opportunity for, you know, potential buyers, an opportunity to, you know, to buy, you know, to tour the property. And then we have a sealed bid process, and we have to be public here before council, you know, before the city sells the real estate. So we could look at something like that. That type of arrangement we need to have. It's a very clear language in there in terms of, you know, you're purchasing this property and it's, you know, declared a public nuisance. And so there's requirements in terms of addressing those nuisances, either rehabbing the property to an acceptable level or demoing it. And then if you don't meet those standards, there's some either way clawback or repercussions to make sure that happens. Or in a scenario where you can't get any interest like that, the city, we have, you know, developed some houses in the past. And then once the site's cleared, we can put it up or say, you know, post it for sale. And the other ones we sold. Basically, the one part it was that you agree to initiate construction of a residential within two years. So that would be the other route that we could go to try to get that property.
So do we know when this owner was deceased or when they passed? What are the, I mean, if the?
2019, is that, is my recollection.
Okay, so do we know the current status of the property taxes? Has, would they have already gone up for tax sale?
Well, that's what happened in June, on June 21st, 2021. Instead of having it come up for a tax sale where some LLC from wherever would come in and just, you know, pay the tax and hoping that, you know, somebody, you know, the owner would come in and give them their 2% a month interest on whatever they pay. Instead of that, because it was a public nuisance, the treasurer said, well, we can do this public nuisance tax sale. So the city was there and we bid, and no one else had any interest in the property at all.
So you, okay, that answers my question.
So that process went through in June.
Yep. And if I recall correctly, that was delayed because some of those sales were suspended COVID in 2020. So yeah, this was initiated quite some time ago. This kind of paused for a while.
Okay.
And the city in the current budget, we have $50,000 in, can't remember exactly how to come on that, but it's basically for demo homes that we have to go in and acquire. We've got the resources to do so. The intent behind that was, and I believe we've had that in there for a couple of years now, is trying to target toward six of these properties that would be demolished a year. So again, that's always our last option, but if it comes to that, we do have the fund to handle it.
I'll make the motion to designate city clerk as the official notice signer. How's that sound? Good? I'm educated.
Just a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have motion from Brad, a second from Rodney. Did I hear that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any, any other discussion? Hearing that vote, please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 12 is in regards to the library renovation project.
This is a resolution for the substantial completion of the library project. I did send an email to the council and upload it. We gave you the new version of the certificate of substantial completion today, which is to be placed on the agenda. It's just our internal review. There's a few items we just wanted to clarify and make sure that were in there. So really what this triggers is now that the library is in there occupying it in terms of the warranty that comes with the contract of, you know, these are the things that the library did that were acceptable. These are the things that still need to be corrected or done. So that couple of months from now, there's a question on something, you know, who's responsible. As you see on the attachments, there are several punch list items that, things that still need to be handled. And that needs to be verified there with this, and right now, I have both reviewed it. And so the certificate of substantial completion does not apply to those items noted in the attachments, nor does it apply to the exterior work from the chamber that was previously approved and masonry work, which is part of the original contract, but we've had a number of, number of times that's been worked on. So it's a little bit odd that we're doing substantial completion with this many things, but since just the time that things in the library had to go in and actually occupy it, that's why we're going to get identified specifically of these things. And in all reality, from a user standpoint, it's maybe a substantial completion. So the architect has reviewed and recommends approval of this substantial completion.
I saw today they're out there putting security cameras in the outside. Is that part of this contract or is that a separate item?
No, it's separate.
Part of the wiring is part of this contract, but the actual cameras are separate.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Sorry, I just have one quick question. The front main doors, those are properly working for you now? Those are working?
I just spoke to the person who's installing the door equipment, and he said they are shipping that tomorrow. He hopes to have it by the end of the week. And so hopefully, within two weeks, our doors will be working.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Tyler. Any other discussion?
So these interior stuff that all need to get done, they'll just do it over a period of time? Do we have a timeframe for them to complete that in or we don't? So how does that work, Harvey?
It's, basically, we're holding on, aren't they retaining?
Yeah, I figured.
Hold it until these things are satisfied. The, unlike street projects where we have a clear dollar amount of liquidated damages, this type of project does not have a per, a dollar amount set liquidated damages for the per day of being after substantial completion. So it's more or less just working with the contractor, putting that retainage along the, moving these things along. I know they've had some issues with supply on items as well as just some of the workforce. There's been turnover in some of the people that originally started the project. But yeah, there's a number of items that we still got to push along.
Good.
The front door on the retainage part, I scanned it really fast.
Is the front door?
On our retain.
On the retain part. I scanned it really fast. I didn't get time to read it really good this afternoon.
Did you ask about the front door?
Yeah, since you're waiting on that.
The front door piece that we're waiting for is not part of this contract.
Oh, of this contract?
It's a separate, yes, it's a separate agreement with the company that's from Algonah that will install that equipment.
Okay.
So like with the cameras in the doors, what we did was install the wiring to where the pranks will be. And then those items, we just actually did solution and programming. We directly hired the firm to do that. So if there's a call for service, if there's an issue, we know who it is. They're down there who handle all our other systems. So it's just otherwise the end of going to who would be involved there. And we'll see that.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, we have a motion from Harley and a second from, I don't remember. Deb, Tyler.
Tyler.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing that vote, please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 13, this is a pay application for the Teets Park Shelterhouse project.
This pay application is in the amount of $48,849.25. Balance to finish is $103,406.27. This is for work including mechanical, over roofing materials and paving work. The kind of quick update on the project, it was in one of my previous MAFM memos. If you've been out there the last couple of weeks, maybe those color of the building is a bit off. So when that was stained, there was some issue with how it was applied or something. So the plan is that wait till spring. It's a water base, so it should be totally clean off just fine, and then we'll restain it at that point. But the work on the interior will continue to finish up in the interim. So we hope that, other than the staining, have more substantial completion by the end of January. But depending on if we've opened it then or wait till it's completely done, this is kind of a substantial afterway and the impact on that may have in terms of warranty and things like that. So they are muddying the ceiling on the interior today. And so that should finish up in final. Or come back and then the interior finishings will start going, the cabinets, countertops, bathrooms now that is, will be sealed and the front door is now in. So now that's completely conditioned. The interior will move quick, and then exterior siding has arrived and is supposed to start going on. Except, as we understand, the starting strips for that are not included for delivery. So now there's a kind of delay until those can get on site so they can get started.
Probably something.
Motion to approve pay application.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Tyler. Is there any discussion? Hearing that vote, please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 14 pertains to the community foundation grant applications.
Last December, we had sent out to all the departments a notice of a new foundation grant which should due January 15th and asking them to, they have a project they'd like to pursue to submit that grant application or the idea of a COT and an explanation. Then there's a committee of junior, Bodie, Mayor, myself that reviewed those. Then kind of narrowed that down to what we think are the most competitive applications to pursue. So the three projects that we propose to submit community foundation applications for our parks department and for the social park development project, specifically the walking loop elements of that. A portion of that for EMS, that obviously you have the emergency service that is in progress with that. Kind of the standard is anymore these days, it's called power load COT. Got a picture of one there. Basically, that's a hydraulic lift. That's for the EMTs and the paramedics and the directors doing the lifting, you know, just the wear and tear on their backs as well as for the patient as well. They're making sure we're getting the even lift. Those are about $35,000 a piece. The ambulance we purchased, the way it's specked is something like this can be installed. It's built for it to be installed. So the EMS association, which is a group of volunteers, they, my understanding is that they're are going to keep putting some funds towards this. The city putting some funds towards the second grade and then going to request the community foundation as well. And then the final project, as we discussed briefly in the work session, we fit fire department and the self-contained breathing apparatus. They're about $6,250 a piece. That's just with the building materials and the gases and fumes they give off. You know, it's, it's not just important for the air, but, you know, the fall and that and what's in that air for the walk. So those are the three projects that we'd like to submit. And we started this year just trying to be a little bit more formal with our process to make sure that we like to have all grant applications come, come to council first. So that's what we do the process this way, so we do like the recommendation to approve some of these three.
Is this something like Joanne's hoping, right, the grant applications to?
So yeah, she'll be working with the departments on, kind of depending on how much they might need on, you know, to write those, yeah.
I think this is good. Number two will hopefully, hopefully prevent injuries to our EMS employees. And number three is gonna hopefully prevent injuries to our volunteer environment. So I will move to approve the applications.
Second.
Through the submission, yep.
There was a second there. Oh, I'm sorry.
I second.
Oh, Brad. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear it. We have a motion from Jody, a second from Brad. Any, any other discussion? Hearing that vote, please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 15 refers to applications for property tax exemption.
There are two group of refinization actions, one from platform one, the swim circle for reconstruction, and one from 2 to 17 East Brew Street for addition. Both are in the refinization associated with the area, driving that approval.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
A motion from Harley, a second from Jody. Is there any discussion? Hearing that vote, please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. And thank you to both families for investing once again in Algonah. Agenda item number 16, our appointments to the planning and zoning commission. There are three of these, one to fill the remainder of Tony Ram's term, and then the other seats held by Mary Toomey and Jeff Gilmore. We have some names for those.
Aaron Seifkin has agreed to fill the planning and zoning spot.
Okay, Tony, okay. Is that a motion then to?
I will move to approve.
Okay.
Aaron Seifkin.
And then is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Vote, please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you for that. And then the two seats then held by Mary and Jeff.
I talked with Mary, and she's willing to continue serving on planning and zoning. And then the mayor and I both kind of jointly talked with Jeff Gilmore, and he's willing to continue serving on planning and zoning.
Okay.
So I would move to approve both of them to continue on planning and zoning.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing and vote please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Very good, motion carried. And thank you everyone for your willingness to serve those positions. Agenda item number seventeen is appointment to the Broadband Telecommunications Commission. This is the, John Bond's term expires, expired the end of last year, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, and I said I'd visit with him and I did, and he would, would be willing to re-serve on that board.
Okay.
So I guess I'd recommend John Bond for re, to re-serve on the Broadband Telecommunications Commission.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. And thank you John for your willingness to carry on with that. Agenda item number eighteen, these are mayoral appointments of the police chief and the fire chief. So we'll handle these separately. I would recommend Bo Miller to be reappointed for a two-year term as Algonah Police Chief.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
You need a motion.
A motion, obviously, do I need a motion?
Yeah.
Right, motion it.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. And then I would recommend Mitch Ulrich to continue serving as Algonah Fire Chief for a two-year term.
I will motion to approve Mitch Ulrich as the Fire Chief for Algonah for another two years.
Okay, we have a motion from Jody, a second from Tyler, is there any discussion? Hearing and vote please Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you very much council and look forward to working with Bo and Mitch in the next two years. So. Agenda item number nineteen, these are mayoral appointments, city council committees and board and commission liaisons. You see the current appointments with the different committees. And I visited with Jacob about this and this, as well as the board and commission liaisons there. We thought maybe would give you council members each just a chance to review these. And then we can come back and address this two weeks from now. See if you would like to continue on, on your current appointment with each committee. And then Jacob, do you want to touch on maybe the importance of the liaison with the boards and the commissions?
So the current council rules just state that the mayor's appointing these positions at time of January of each year. So it's, 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 it's fine, but, so yeah, the council committees, you know, Ways and Means, Streets and Sewers, you know, they meet very regularly relative to the others. Nominations, I'm not sure if they've ever had formal meetings, but those are the folks that are kind of assigned with, finding the board and commission members. On the board and commission liaison, I believe we had this conversation come out of our strategic plan that we did. But we had talked about having kind of one council member designated as a liaison to different boards and commissions that, the expectation that they would attend those meetings. And then when the item became, it was on that came to council for discussion, they'd be able to, you know, talk with firsthand knowledge of the communication that was had at that meeting. As, you know, just to increase communication and activity between the boards and commissions and council. So there'd be no, there'd be no authority, there'd be no, you absolutely have to attend these, but just kind of another way, again, kind of coordinating between the entities. So the eleven boards and commissions are listed. I think, you know, some of these meet more often than not. My recommendation be the, to look at would be these seven here that meet relatively frequently. So the Library Board Trustees, they meet once a month, it's sort of a scheduled meeting. Parks and Rec Commission, they meet as needed, but typically about three to four times a year. I guess kind of stepping backwards, so the Library Board, per city ordinance, the council has designated authority over the library and ops grounds to, to, to that board. I was, well, they serve in, as well as the personnel, if the hiring, the hiring director, things like that. Parks and Rec Commission, all the city parks grounds are under their authority. They meet two to four times a year, but as needed. Planning and zoning commissions, they have to oversee our planning and zoning. They meet as needed, anywhere from one to probably six times a year, just kind of, depending on the time of year and what's going on. Then the Board of Adjustment, that is more or less the judicial, quasi judicial branch of the city. And they basically look at zoning and if they're, you can request appearance or special exception. And then they make a decision on how that should be handled. Cemetery Board, they need as needed, a couple of times a year typically. Airport Commission, they do meet regularly every month. And the tree board, they need as, as needed, as about two or three times a year. So all of these boards and commissions in the records code section, they can go to spell out, you know, what their duties are and their role. So we thought this would just kind of be, give it a try, maybe, you know, start with all these, or just some of the select ones. Let's see how it goes and then, you know, the committees as well as these positions. There's somewhere in a way that would happen, you know, we wanted to, we can decide tonight, but kind of intent was, you know, have a discussion and then, you know, find us up next. So any kind of initial questions on that idea of what the different entities do?
I mean, you got the top seven there, you got six of us here, so one person may end up with two, but if we all take one, it seems like a natural fit. It gives us time to look at it and maybe feel where we are, I think that's a good idea, but.
And it probably makes sense to have the board adjustment and the planning and zoning, have the same person, deal with the same content, so combine those.
Combine those and you've got the five others, yeah.
Six to, to, to be, six.
Okay.
Right.
So do you want those divvied up tonight or just to think about?
I think probably just think about and if there's any initial discussion that wants to be held tonight, but otherwise, you know, mayor, you want them to kind of coordinate with you on what they're interested in.
That'd be fine, yeah. Kind of review the committee appointments also, they're at the top, and then, and then the new boards and commissions and, yeah. See which ones would fit your schedule and your interests the best and be able to participate, yeah.
Office for one, there is a planning and zoning meeting, probably gonna be the first week in February, first or second. You guys will see it at the next council meeting and refer to P and Z, but I'm trying to get it all set up.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on that agenda item, anything or? Okay. We'll move to agenda item number twenty, then council meeting rules.
This is just for, for discussion only at this point. I have faded in my administrative report that possibly considered, but given where we're at, I would just wait on that and it needs to be approved by a resolution anyway. So we had discussed this last year, any of these updated, our current rules were from two thousand and six. And just kind of adding some of the things that have changed since then, incorporate some things that, that were absent. A lot of these items in here, it's kind of in sections where the general rules are kind of just, you know, defining, you know, for, for council members to take any action. The mayor, Mayor Protem or another appointee, you know, they're the presiding officers of, you know, they're the ones technically in charge of calling on someone to speak. I was thinking to people, just kind of have open conversation, but for some reason that wasn't working, you know, they're the ones that are really meeting. Designates the city attorney as the parliamentarian, so if there's a question on procedures or implications, please. Spells out the types of meetings that we hold, you know, our regular meetings, work session, special meetings, a closed session, you know, media coverage. You know, we're open meetings and we'll provide, you know, a notice to any media organization that requests such. A lot of these things, like the media notifications are required by state law, but we're kind of just memorializing in here as this is kind of our working council meeting document. Duties of the presiding officer. One that is a little bit, a little bit more detailed is the preparation of the agenda. So the way I have my structure, the city clerk is the person officially in charge of the scheduling, posting the agenda, adapting coordination with the city administrator. And then the city administrator is the mayor, targeting the final K on the agenda before making those out. What I also have there is our current timeline is, just, you know, makes it clear, is noon on Thursday before. That's the deadline for you having that, that one to be packaged. And then it defines our order of business. Our current plan, our, our current rules are generally accurate, but now all these items aren't the same or the same order. So it just spells out basically our current process of the order that we're going. Section two, motions, resolutions, ordinances, and voting, just kind of spells out the procedures. You know, a number of stains, how that's recorded, votes by absent council members. Conflict of interest, this isn't creating a new, we're basically just restating what's already in the I code, the C code, just making reference to that this is what we follow. Again, it's, it's kind of just to put a central multiplication of these things instead of when there's a question, having to go and pull from a regular excerpt somewhere, this is what applies. For appointments. So the mayor posts to council committees. Council can establish special committees at any time, the mayor can appoint liaison to the board and commission appointments and who's responsible. The notification process, and then give a first, second, and then the final notification for appointment. And then we also added language on the I was agenda, the now is law, which I think was adopted in the early twenty teens. It was after the current rules, we learned that, again, more or less just referencing that, you know, we follow that in terms of our appointments and trying to stay as balanced as possible. But there are exceptions after so much time that you can point otherwise. And then probably the biggest change or the new section is just for color participation, just kind of spelling out. We haven't had any incidences that, you know, raised concern for this, but you know, most cities have a, you know, pretty clear, this is how, this is expected meetings. So we have in there that, you know, there's a five-minute, you know, time, the mayor has the discretion to change that. You know, we have a council ritual shooting, a whole bunch of things that could be shortened. Also just talks about the decorum, you know, how that's handled, you know, if someone's being, you know, the rule of the cop constantly interrupting that, okay, you know, the providing officer can, you know, ask that they be removed. And then the other hand is it just kind of reiterates with the council packet, but just makes it clear that members of the public can request that written communication be provided in the council packet with the intent, you know, that they're considered all council and mayor. That's fine, but it needs to be determined in the agenda item and be received by that Thursday by noon. Or if they want to submit on the non-agenda item, that can be done as well, still included in the council packet. But, you know, if it's something that is not of city business at all, you know, the city clerk has the discretion, you know, if they're, if they're complaining about the UN conspiracy or something. Nothing we've had here, but they pop up and they'll say, so you gotta kind of have these, so. Generalized, if the content is all here, what's being proposed, there's probably just some leaking grammar or formatting things that need to be adjusted yet. I guess if you have initial questions or if you have some time to look at this, you can address those things for the next meeting or if they can, if you have even a formal document. You've been operating in our existing rules since two thousand and six and see the least, okay.
Well, first I started reading some of our existing rules, just the first page or so, I thought, oh, that's different than what we do, or we don't start at that time.
Yeah.
And so what I read in the proposed rules looked like all the errors I could see had been taken care of, so. So far, they look good.
And the intent would be that this would be sometimes adopted by resolution and then probably, you know, after each city council election, like what we do with appointments, we either re-adopt or just revisit it and, okay, they may be clarified correctly or added. But at any time, it could be changed by resolution.
So, I mean, I remember when we changed the council's start time, we really should have at that time addressed the rules and made corrections then.
Yeah, the, so you know, nothing in the rules can supersede what's in a city or state law. Our council's starting time is actually set by ordinance. So the rules weren't consistent, but ultimately the ordinance that, you know, decide that, some cities, their ordinance is worded as, you know, the meeting time is set by resolution or by, you know, motion. So it, it could, Jay, be inconsistent, but in our scenario, we should have updated it, but it's just by ordinance that ultimately drawn, even if it wasn't counted for sure.
Any other discussion then on the meeting rules or questions for Jacob or? Then we'll just address this at a future meeting then, okay, yep. Okay, agenda item number twenty-one then is additional discussion on the budget. From the work session, is there anything more we want to?
Um, I think it'd be good to kind of just knock through the legislative and kind of go over some of the revenues that we're looking at. And might also, I think you work up to talk parks and rec, there's so many moving parts in that, or at least to talk parks. You know, we're obviously going to visit that one at once, so I think it'd be fine to kind of, we'll, we'll discuss it here and revisit it in the next meeting, again, this year.
I have a conflict at six if I need to pick somebody up, but that's the only thing I can try to get that accomplished here through someone else. But otherwise, you'll sit out at work and not be able to get anywhere.
Well, I mean, I.
I mean, I'll also try to make it work, because otherwise, that's the only conflict I have.
Can we just go through legislative real quick? Just a pretty quick one, basically this is the mayor and the city council, the department budget. So we have there, it's, that's the, the person who's paying, then the mayor's annual salary. The way we portion out different contract services, workers' comp, that's to be up into the department, so that's why I see some of those items. We do include, you know, fifteen hundred dollars for traveling conferences, so that's like the I will leave the cities conference. It's on September every year, this last time around, the mayor and the council gave us one of that. But there are other kind of conferences and events throughout the year that, between the city state by the cities, try to keep it long, but, but there are funds in there. If you, if there's a conference or training opportunity you're interested in, you could utilize those funds for. Attorney expenses, those just kind of vary depending on what, if anything comes up, about four thousand. about $4,000, you're there for that, and then the other $4,000, when they're miscellaneous, that is the share of access systems for our computers and IT and phones and all that. Maybe let's just, maybe we can do parks and rec.
I'm good, I just got a confirmation, somebody will pick up for me.
Let's just plan to go over parks, and then we can, you know, there's, we can just process and just handle the others under the next meeting, others. So for hotel motel tax, we're still operating on the assumption that this current funding formula, and maybe if that money changed, we're still looking at that, but last year we set up, right up there, hotel motel tax, I think it was the parks department for capital projects, so we just set up a specific fund for that, so that money gets received in there, it's very clear where the money is, and how it's spent, if it stays in there, if it's not spent, it rolls over, so the funding isn't different, it's just how we're accounting for it, including the line item. The rent for teats and vets park, we have $1,500, you know, vets is up a little bit, we think the prob, you know, when teats goes online, there'll probably be some, you know, people who's over there, and then we have discussed with the commission about increasing rates right now, vets park is $40 a day, these are not, we can, which is very low compared to, kind of some of the other facilities around that we checked out, we visited with the parks commission last year, they wanted me waiting to raise those rental fees until we got teats online, okay, let's kind of, maybe just set and adjust both at the same time, but we're just kind of operating there the same, same amount for the time being, but good chance the revenue should go up. We go with wages, we plan starting part-time at $15 an hour, so that's the increase there. This last summer, we did four, summer seasonal, we've had three in the past, so our attempts to stick with that four.
Those part-time wages, that's mainly just summer, right?
Yeah.
Nothing in winter as usual?
Um, I don't think, I mean, it might be something extremely rare, if one of like the, the street seasonal people end up doing some work in the parks or something, but yeah, it's, because we'll, I think this last time around, we had two, two people that worked at one of the school, and so they were kind of, you know, just, you know, May through August, and then we had two other individuals that were in the school, were a little bit more flexible, so we had them start in like April, I think they actually worked through September, maybe into October, so we do, so most of the summer, but then we can, and then keep those seasonal longer to take care of that, too. On trail maintenance, this applies, we've got $15,000 budget in that for next year, last year, we've taken a good, good chunk of those items out, but there are some additional crack filling and some replacements that we still have to do, but I think after this coming year, we'll more or less have everything back in good condition, we can probably drop that number in for a couple more years, and then bring that up, just to keep everything For minor equipment, we have $4,000, $350, the DFP that we'd like to, we had hoped to purchase on this last year, but the numbers were things finally came in, ended up being a lot more than what we had budgeted for, so it's been pushed back, but bulk have to go towards a leaf back, that would hook up behind, either the lawnmower or the side-by-side, so along like all the fence lines and things, with the leaves built up, taking care of those, and the chainsaw, and the media. We increased buildings and grounds a bit, one of the things that we'd like to start doing is by a park, is updating our trash cans, so from the blue downlit ones, they're very functional, but something a little bit more kind of civic standard of what we expected, what we see when we see parks.
Jacob, in your notes, under 6331, did you have, I don't know, 900, and I might have missed a number there for something?
6331?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a number missing there. On capital outlay, so we've got $25,000 in there, one will be for a UTE, a new or side-by-side, so we currently have one of those, this last year, we rented one, it's due up for replacement on the next, on this upcoming year, the CIP. Our thinking is that rather than trade that one in, we'll just keep that one, because with our additional seasonal staff, we didn't have to rent that second one, just because it's, just makes getting things done and getting people around a lot more convenient, so, you know, the new was planned, we just, we will trade that in and just keep that okay, and then we have $5,000 in there right now, as we discussed in the work session, that might change, as a countermeasure for purchasing the cemetery tractor, for that Capital outlay of parks projects, we've got Call City Park, that shelter, redoing the shingles and the siding, as well as possibly doing utility extensions for a future park shed addition, well, the capital was planned, we'll see where, kind of, kind of, that being the fiscal year, and the route route funds, and then just, you know, kind of specifically, yes, project for the parks. Got $30,000 in there for park signage, that's going to be the weight binding signage, the intent is that the Maple Park, Call City Park, and then, I think it was Vets Park, or at least one other park, such a park would come out of the capital project, which we do. Currently, Call City, Maple, do not have any signage, that's why it's a pre-prioritized. What kind of signage would those be?
There's one out of teats already.
Yeah, so that, that same style, probably both of those, if we're going to look at, it's not like just doing blade signage or one side, because both those parks are corners, we might kind of have it with a 90-degree angle, so it's a sign on both sides, so, you know, they, I don't have it easily pull, pull up, they, they match it out of Teats Park and with our weight binding signage plan for all parks.
On page five, 6726, toys, parks, replacing playground equipment, I guess, would that actually go, go under like the Parks and Rec budget? I, you have it under here, it's probably kind of one of those cemetery streets and the streets budget thing with the trucks, you know, where does it go, are you sharing it?
Yeah, so this, this would be for actual, like, put it in a, in a park playground, so the, at the 3,363, the expenditure to date, that was for the new, I guess, leaf rigger piece down at Vets Park.
Yeah.
So it would just be for, everybody would like, we have time for replacement of that.
That's okay, so like, when we go to Parks and Rec's budget, we won't see any like actual playground equipment or fixing or that kind of thing, we'll only see it under this budget?
Well, this, this is the parks.
Yeah, okay, we won't see it under the other one.
Correct.
So do they have specific things in mind for this playground equipment, or is it just as needed type replacement?
I don't have it off the top of my head, recall if we have any specifically in mind, or it's just kind of a, we've got some older equipment, and as things go, I will check on that and follow up with, discuss it up next week when we take out parks, or if there's any particular pieces that we'd recommend we prioritize, certainly, hopefully, as a suggestion.
Well, I just hope that they keep in mind tough, durable equipment, because I know a couple, well, a couple of years ago, I think there's a little four-seater, you know, they pedal around in a circle, and that was certainly not built as heavy as it needs to be in a public park, because that one looked like it took some abuse early on.
So for 6728, we have $35,000 in there for the new budget, and that was my item underneath there, total up to a lot more, so is that just a portion for, maybe some of that can be pushed out, is that what that? Yeah, so the exceptions for those, that project's been pushed back with, that's the downtown pocket park, just with what we've had with Central Park and then South Park going on, so that project's just kind of been repositioned in the border line, and then the Herman ways, one through four, those are the notes for the current fiscal year. Playground bordering, we found some alternative options for that that are going to be a little bit cheaper, Herman Wise Shelter, that is, I believe, most all the way done, we had some delays on the siding, but I think we just have to work with the electrician to get around the meter box, and I think we pretty much should be down on that now. So for next year, what we're looking at is the Call City Shelter, and then the Park Shed Edition, and then just, like I said, kind of miscellaneous, if there is kind of small projects in the park that we want to upgrade. All the pages are just employee benefits, kind of just a note on all the budget line items, just on how those funds come out, you'll see some line items early in the expenditures that are those that are zeroed out, and it's just, they've been moved around, and they'll drop off the budget sheet until all the lines are zero, so that, that's kind of across the board, just a little quirk. And then kind of the last project to note is, we do have $700,000 in the, for the capital project for Central Park, we met with the design team from Oldham Lake to South Park, Pickleball Courts, and Central Park, they thought they were going to be able to get through the South Park design pretty quick, and that one, we should be able to get even bid out here until February, so I expect that next week, we'll have a contract for that, so at the time of that, I think we're probably going to do the spending, the capital funds in the parks department budget, that $250,000 that's in the current budget, probably the majority of that will be reallocated towards that project, and then we'll try to accomplish the Pickleball Court projects yet in this fiscal year, assuming we can bid out early, but obviously, something will change, so that's not currently up in this budget, we're going to reduce the funds for that, and that entire $700, that would be towards Central Park development. The timeline that we've discussed with Oldham Lake is probably, just given all the site conditions and complexities, that there won't be some additional design time, and some may not get that ready to bid like in February, might be kind of April, May, which is not ideal timing, so what we discussed is setting that up, where you would have a, either a bike completed, or just a interim deadlines on a project, to make it more attractive to bidders, and not scare them off or push the price way high by having a confined, a really tight timeline, so the idea is that we would do kind of the initial site work in the skate park, the walking trails, you know, probably signage, most of those things are all accounted here, 2022, and then do utility stuffs as well, and then come back in 2023, and finish up the splash pad, I think that, it'll still get done in the same fiscal year, just due to the two construction cycles, that'll also provide us more time in terms of fundraising, and we discussed a little trying to raise, you know, $200,000 for the splash pad, that we could, you know, have the placeholder for it in there, but then on the final scope of that, square footage wise and the features, you know, the price could change dramatically depending on the type of features that you want to select, so give them more time to fundraise, you know, we'll be able to make better predictions on, you know, what, what those features should be, because that's an item that will be in the project when it's bid, it'll more or less be defined as designed and built by others, so we'll work with a company that specializes in that, and then they'll come in and, you know, do it, so the general need to get the utilities there, the site works, the elevation, drainage, things like that, so that will work out well with doing the 2022 construction of the skate park and all the rest of the site. If we can possibly still pull off in 2022, we're not ruling that out, but just from the timing perspective, it might make sense to kind of get all that done, and then do the splash pad in '23. The other item that's factored into that is as we've got a little bit more detail on the part of this first splash pad, they follow the same categories as pools and spas, and so based on your square footage, there are bathroom and shower requirements that you have to have, and so we had talked about, you know, updating the Vets Park Shelter, just as it needs an update, but if we're looking at like a 2,000 square foot splash pad, we're going to need to add, I believe it's at least two additional restroom stalls, and then add at least three shower units, and so, you know, we're trying to maybe do that as, we're self-performing some of that, or working with some groups, kind of your community project, to get that all figured out and done, with all the other things we have going on, I'm not sure that that could get done, completed, and signed off as approved by the state by the time, you know, we're in a rush to get a splash pad in, because that'll be part of the review, is, okay, you're going to meet all, all the standards, so doing those variety of items, I think it probably makes sense, maybe, commit to the project, bid it as one, it's not, not doing bid it as one, it's not not doing it, it's just from a timing standpoint. At this time, I think it makes more sense to look at phasing that with the likelihood it might not happen actually to twenty twenty-three. So that's kind of a lot.
I just have a question in terms of the whole neighborhood aspect of it. So the county, from what I read, is attempting to buy the old UVC building. Does anybody know what they're going to do with that building?
My, um, this has not been explicitly stated to me by any county official, but my understanding is that um, they're going to be using some of their CARES Act money to make that purchase for American Rescue Plan funds. And it would have something to do with um, emergency management and where the sheriff's department using that site for future pandemic needs if they need to drag, you know, things like that. And then kind of storage.
And storage, right.
Okay, I'm just wondering for traffic.
Do we have any say in any of that? Because that's pretty terrible to have that right across from our beautiful new Central Park.
Um, I I did reach out to Ag Non Development and, you know, just expressed that. I hope you share with the supervisors of, you know, when a commercial property comes off the tax roll and then, you know, just the accounting opportunity costs of business. You don't want vacant businesses or vacant vacant residencies, but you need vacancies in order for someone to move or for someone to start something new. But, you know, ultimately, it's the county's decision and we can't, can't stop them or anything. They that's in the best interest of the county.
It's an interesting decision.
What you said with the splash pad being pool and spa, so we have to have bathrooms and shower stalls now?
Yeah, based on um, there's a, there's a table that's basically by your group square footage and that determines what your occupancy is. You know, you have to have so many units for that occupancy. Um, so I think right now, we have to add two additional restaurants to female and then one restaurant to the to the men's, um, which it'd just be added or we can swap out when we're a little up. But, you know, for that, we're going to have to certainly expand the footprint of the restaurants. And it's going to be a lot more complicated than trying to just. Our original idea was let's refinish the existing ones and replace the, um, you know, facilities and, you know, redo the floor, lighting, windows. And then we would add a family restroom or additional restroom. That might still be an option, um, but we'll probably have to be, you know, we'd add two additional family restrooms. And then we still have to have, I believe the minimum is going to end up being the two thousand square splash pad, three showers. And so that's going to be one of those things that when it goes into the state for review, um, is your spot, you know, is your proposed design for the splash pad, you know, complying with all regulations? That is one of the regulations that they look at. Um, that was at some point, you know, a couple of months ago, we had one of our design meetings that we realized that, you know, we're fully subject to that. So it's basically the same, same criteria that square footage for our pool that we have to provide for a splash pad.
So the is the key though, the two thousand square foot splash pad? So are we exempt from that if that if there's a smaller pad?
Uh, you kind of see that, um, so I guess this doesn't have a square footage, but um, basically anything that we're going to put in that um, is going to have a decent decent amount. We're going to fall into that minimum, uh, one hundred and twenty-two hundred occupancy. And so these are what would be required um, in that line too. So for male, we need two showers, one toilet, two urinals, one lavatory. Um, then for female, two showers, three toilets and one lavatory. So those are the things that we'll have to figure out. And we probably have to inform with an architect on South Park on the shelter house. Hopefully he's still been able to do, you know, for more or more, maybe just contract it out completely. I want to make sure we're compliant in terms of, because this will be reviewed by the state, just like a something similar. You know, something that's going for the fire, fire marshal to review.
The patron load, that's the number of people using it at one time? That's not like a daily number?
That's the um, capacity based on the square footage. So there's a, you know, seven square feet is basically one person type of thing. I don't look at specific numbers on that. It was basically your size divided by square footage per person. Um, and then that leads to your patron load and then what size you have to design for.
I mean, that's just all going to be put into the bid process. I mean, whenever we just, it's good to know this, but it's all just going to go into the bid. A part of it.
Yeah.
And we'll just, it's going to put whatever the cost is. I mean, we'd have to decide if this is how big we want it and this is the cost or this is how big and this. I mean, that's just part of the bid process.
Yeah, and um, so we should have a, I'll see if we can get by the next council meeting. We should be getting, we're supposed to be getting concepts here in January from Golden Lake on the splash pad. So if we can get those kind of square footage options up, we're looking at and we can tie it, you know, back to this. And um, as I recall, there was nothing to get to a point where we wouldn't have to do anything was wire even a splash pad, that type of thing. Um, so we're probably more or less have to do something that's just going to be how we do that and, you know, trying to, you know, the cost of these things, trying to to keep it as affordable as possible and trying to self-perform the project on that. Um, shelter house just was, you know, as we've seen with Tees, you know, we got, you know, five bids on that and the prices for it, they were, um, that, you know, we might uh, keep that element down. But depending on, you know, we may have to get something where we, um, you know, hire our contractors to perform a a good portion of the work, but it can probably be done for far less than we would put there threshold, but just get competitive quotes. We'll kind of finalize that size on what we're going to be. And then, you know, look at what we have to do for configuring the bathrooms and add, if we have to add conditions.
I'm just not so sure we shouldn't be shooting for the first line, trying to stay under a hundred. Because when you talk about a hundred to two hundred people capacity, what's that going to be doing to our pool? I mean, you pull that many people away, do we rather size it for a hundred so that we're not affecting the pool that's apparently?
Embarrassing to know too, always, well, he said seven square feet.
Oh, so exactly, it's um, it's fifteen per, fifteen square feet per person of the wetted surface area. So that doesn't include kind of five foot perimeter around it for seating. So basically if we go over fif, if we go fifteen hundred square feet or more, um,
Then we're in the category two?
Yeah, or even, yeah.
I would think we should strive to see what they can come up with staying under that number.
Well, we can ask, you know, for kind of an option, that would be probably that fourteen, fifteen hundred square foot option. And then, you know, what it would look like for a two thousand, twenty hundred square feet.
Be interesting to see how big that is.
It'd be nice to, if we can compare it and see what if, what a fourteen hundred and eighty some, fourteen ninety, you know, just to fit under that. And then see what it costs to go to a two thousand. And then I was talking to Deers about it and he was saying that you can do the legwork ahead of time in prep if you did want to expand to do it with minimal expense by just adding adding more fixtures. But preparing it ahead of time is important.
But now you know that if you prepare for that larger size, you're going to have to do a lot more expensive building.
Right.
Definitely for that as well. How far that's going to be ever interesting. So one option that you can do is um, inside the splash pad, you can basically design for future expansion. Just kind of place caps on where those future features would be. So if it is a situation where you're fundraising over time, um, you can basically get the footprint built and, you know, buy the features that you can afford. And then as you raise funds, you can basically buy the feature, pop up the cap, install and it's ready to go. So we'll, I'll follow up with Golden Lake on this, try to get some, if we get the concepts from them by the next meeting for discussion as well as kind of go over the impacts, um, what this stands in terms of fixture requirements as well. And take it from there if that works.
I think, I I guess I'd be surprised if you didn't find that the feature addition is a minimal cost compared to the whole project. So, you know, capping a few features isn't going to make a lot of difference in cost. But I guess we'll see.
But if you build it too small, then coming back to add on, or you just don't use it because you built it too small and then it's, you run the risk of wasting a ton of money on a big project.
And how area to me is being redeveloped even from the bathroom or from the baseball fields to the skate park to whatever. And having extra bathroom facilities doesn't seem like a bad idea.
Yeah, that's probably.
Whether it's because of the splash pad or it's because of the whole area.
Yeah.
Being redeveloped with more baseball and fan, you know, so that may not be a bad thing to have anyway. So, but whatever, we got time. I mean, you have double phase, nothing bothers. So, yeah, let's just move forward, get options and hopefully we can make the best decision.
All right. Um, so that will end our kind of department bunch discussions and I'll try to keep this quick. I just kind of wanted to kind of give us to know we're doing, we're coming down on our revenues and things like that. Just to kind of just share that sort of perspective. So this is a, you know, a broken document, obviously, but this is where we, you know, we're looking at our revenues by by source. So one of the things that um, we're running it, we're kind of running to is on our property tax on valuation. So the good news is that our taxable valuation, um, sorry, did go up, um, you know, total by about two and a half million. You know, by residential, that's about one, one point five million. Commercial one point three, commercial or industrial about seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the bad news is that the way Iowa's property tax system works is those taxable valuations are defined by a resident by a rollback. So for commercial, it's always at ninety percent, industrious always at ninety percent. Residential varies year to year. So the residential rollback rate went down about, um, about the hundred point scale, a little more than than two percent, which basically means that on a house that's worth a hundred thousand dollars or, you know, the assessed value is a hundred thousand dollars. You know, last year we could tax value on fifty-six thousand dollars of that valuation. Whereas this year, we can only tax on fifty-four thousand dollars of value valuation. So that that growth that we got basically gets wiped out by the rollback. Uh, the other thing to note is on the multi-residential rollback, that is on a sliding scale decline. Um, that was a law that legislature passed about five years ago, we're getting close to the end. So last year's our multifamily, we were going to tax on seventy-one point two-five percent. This year we're only able to tax on sixty-seven point five percent. And that will scale down next year. And then the year after that, it will just get set at the same residential rollback rate. It had previously been taxed at ninety percent. We, it makes an impact on us, but in terms of our our property portfolio, multi-residential is only so much. In major cities with giant complexes, the city government is feeling the same impact. But, you know, it certainly does impact us as well. And then the other thing to note when it comes to property tax is backfill. So in twenty-ten, uh, the state passed a law that reduced what's taxable on commercial property taxes from a hundred percent down to ninety percent. Um, and the theory was that that would spark so much commercial growth that those new buildings would, you know, basically didn't have beat money ahead because there could be obviously growth that happens. Well, generally, it didn't work that way. And then this last year, at the end of the session of the legislature, uh, whoops, let me step back a second. So when they passed that bill and said, we're going, we're going to grow out of this deduction, the state said, we'll backfill you that difference, you know, for the time being until we hit that growth. Um, so basically that ten percent that we lost, the state made up for. Last year, that was about a hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. But for the next eight years, that backfill is going to be deducted by one eighth a year until it gets down to zero. And they they just don't go back for the payments. So, you know, we're basically just from that, you know, losing a little over eighteen thousand dollars in state revenue that we had last year that we're not going to get this year. So you kind of combine all those different factors on on the rollback rates, even though our valuations went up, and then we're in reality, you know, in in reality, um, you know, the amount that we can actually tax and increase revenue on, we're probably only increasing that by about one percent. So from a property tax standpoint, is, you know, it's going to be less than, our increase probably be less than obviously what a valuation was. We're still kind of working on these numbers and how they fit into the product value, but that's just kind of what we're out of property taxes. I'm just kind of as a rule, I'm just assuming our rep, our property tax revenue is stagnant. Um, you know, this is the, what we kind of have rejected out. The employee benefits of debt service, we can set those tax levies at whatever they need to be. Whatever need to pay our debt obligations, that's what we set. The general tax levy, you know, which is the bulk of it, that's a cap of eight point one per thousand dollars valuation, which, you know, we're already at. So we we can't generate any additional revenue off that. You know, the county sets the assessed values, the state sets the rollback and we get what we get. So that's where, you know, basically from last year to this year, we're only looking at a one, one point oh eight percent increase in general fund revenues out of that line item, which is about twenty-two thousand dollars. So we'll, I mean, figure it out, but it's just, it could be worse news, but so it could be better news. Kind of better news on our other revenues, direct to the bulk of things, but those are looking good. Uh, road use tax, we're probably going to end up being about the same amount that we're currently at budgeted. But we've got about six. But we've got about $688,000 that we're planning on that and assuming about a dollar of the loan, the state's per capita allocation projection. So the way road use tax works is we buy gas, we buy a new car, there's a number of different actions that are presided to that, goes toward this road use tax fund and then that constitutes D O T, the cities and counties, unfortunately, to pay for road infrastructure maintenance. So this is the primary fund of our street department that those revenues are going to be. We aren't seeing a reduction of those. On local sales tax, the state provides guidance on what we should plan right now. They're projecting that budget $906,000 for hotel motel. You know, based on previous years and kind of where we're at year to date, I hope that doesn't really be, be much higher. But 906 is still, you know, being from the number that they projected us last year is a pretty significant increase. And then hotel motel tax, right now, we're, you know, revenue is projecting 135,000 on that, which will more or less take us back to an average year. But you can see on this table, this is by calendar year, but the cells in orange, those are quarters that were impacted by COVID. And so even the COVID that impacts that we had, you know, in the grand scheme of things, we didn't see a major reduction. So we're budgeting 135, but again, we're hoping that number will probably actually be higher, like to, you know, budget revenues a little bit more than, you know, be surprised at the end of the day. So we're obviously, you know, when it comes to, if some of our capital projects will lose, you know, lost or other funds, you know, the transfer to pay for those capital, but when we look at really our operating expenses, which we expect to be paid out of that year's, you know, property tax revenue, just based on our limited growth, we might have to be creative. It depends on how, how we handle those, but also continue our investments and maintain our force competitively. So I will just kind of call that for tonight.
Okay. Everybody good with that? End of the discussion tonight? All right, thank you very much, Jacob.
I appreciate all the comments and the first discussion. Next meeting, can you have the, can you go over it?
Yes. It's 6:35 and I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. I have a motion and a second, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.